Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Thursday, April 21st, 2021, 9:00 AM. My name is Ty Mensard, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair, Commissioner Gary Edwards is present, as well as Commissioner Karla Mahia. We have County Manager Emira Chavez, Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, Economic Development Manager Jenica Machado, and two guests from our Economic Development Council, Michael Cade and Jason Robertson. Topic this morning is Thurston Strong's 24-Month Economic Recovery Plan. We're slated for an hour. Public can follow along on our Thurston County YouTube channel through a live stream or through conference call at 360-252-9020. The PIN is 1234, and I will turn this to the County Manager for introduction to today's topic.
Thank you, Commissioners, and good morning. Some other background, back in March 2020, and that was when the whole pandemic, the COVID-19 pandemic, hit across the nation and the world, there was an attempt to have a consolidated effort, to have a regional response, and somewhat of a recovery task. And that's how the Thurston Strong Task Force was formed. And it was a community-based, as well as a government-based coordinated efforts. And the Board of County Commissioners allocated CARES money last year to Thurston Strong to help us deliver the need to address the needs of our community in terms of businesses, as well as childcare and everything else. So Thurston Strong has been proven to be a very effective organization, at least from my point of view. And what you'll be hearing today is a 24-month reset and recovery plan as to how Thurston Strong is looking into the future to continue to support our businesses and to continue to support our community and their recovery efforts as we get out of the pandemic. So, good morning.
Welcome.
Who's taking the lead on this?
Jenica, you want to introduce us?
Yes, thank you. So, we have, as Commissioner Mensard stated, Michael Cade with the EDC and the consultant Jason Robertson. I'd just like to say before we start that I really deeply appreciate the leadership and guidance that both of these men have provided. This plan outlines a path forward that ensures that we don't just rebuild, but rebuild better and build towards a more equitable and inclusive economy. So, thank you both, Michael and Jason. And I believe this is going to help be a roadmap for Thurston County to move forward. Jason, I believe you have some slides to share, and so feel free to pop those on the screen and take this away. Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Jenica. And before I start, I want to, sometimes we get so busy doing what we're doing, we forget to say thank you. And I did want to thank the Commission because most of what I'm about to share with you was made possible by your investment. And I think you're going to like what you see. I wanted to start with a little recap, so I'm going to share my screen in a second and then talk about what we're planning, what we're thinking, what we're seeing for the next two years of recovery and reset. So, just a quick reminder of who the partners are. This is the core team for Thurston Strong. It's the three largest cities in Thurston County, along with the county, as well as economic and community developments and nonprofits that have a county-wide service mission, including the EDC, Thurston Chamber, Community Foundation, imagine or experience Olympia and beyond, the Port, PAC Mountain Workforce Development Council. And joining us for this Phase Two is South Peget Sound Community College, who will play an instrumental role in some of the training and career pathway reset that we're going to need to focus on. We, you know, I know some of this that you've heard me say before, but we adopted a respond, recover, reset approach from the very beginning, realizing that, you know, just based on the data that we saw, that there was some triage that needed to happen and is still going on, but that some of the jobs that were lost, some of the industries that were lost aren't going to come back, and we could leave it be, or we could try to regrow stronger. We could try and be more inclusive as a community for economic opportunity. And so, you know, that's what we're starting to pivot towards over the next year at least. So what we did, the day that we heard that the virus was in Washington, a number of us got together and formed Thurston Strong. We've been meeting every Friday since March 2020. The EDC stood up a business hotline and filled it over 10,000 calls and visits, emails of people desperate for help or to turn. We also set up ThurstonStrong.org, which over the last year has seen 15,000 unique visitors. Our lane is helping impacted businesses and workers. And so what we were able to do is kind of filter through all the information that was coming out and get people direction where to apply for unemployment benefits, business grants, technical resources. And it really has been quite successful. I think it set Thurston County apart. One example of that is Thurston County is really overrepresented in the number of payroll protection program, forgivable grants, loans in Washington State. And you can see across the top here, Olympia businesses, these are just small businesses that receive loans $150,000 or less. The average, by and large, for the whole county was $37,000. Remember, this is probably summer of 2020. And so these were bridge grants that helped people stay alive in the early days. Altogether, more than $100 million was hauled into Thurston County, including some in the bottom line here, nonprofits. But, you know, that's a month to three months for most businesses. So, we knew we had ongoing work to do. And this is just a little tree chart showing how we ended up spending your investment. The task force thankfully understood that one of the most important things we could do to not only help businesses, but help workers and families was invest in childcare. Childcare providers, by the summer of 2020, I think 40% of them had shut down across the state. At the same time, we were doing restart, if you'll recall. People were being asked to come back to work. First responders never got off of work. And so where were they going to take their children? You know, and then another layer to this is that most of the childcare providers are women-owned businesses with women and minority employees. And so we just saw a great investment opportunity there, and I'm pleased to say that it did help. We also had a micro-business loan. Those were smaller grants in the amount of $1,500 to cover rent or replacement of lost food or beverage investment. We had a restaurant retail, which were in the $10,000 to $20,000 range. We had a nonprofit grant, same range. Agriculture, we helped, that was more of a food system grant, where we helped everybody in the supply chain from farmers to manufacturers of food to farmers' markets. We also purchased and distributed over $80,000 worth of masks and hand sanitizer very early on. And we expanded the EDC scale-up program that provides training for businesses. And, you know, not surprisingly, a lot of businesses are looking to convert their model to more of an online presence and so forth. So, that's, there's a waiting list still today for those kinds of services. We, you know, beyond just getting money into people's hands, the personal connection was the kind of the surprising, beautiful outcome in all this. People felt alone, you know? It was a pandemic. People were kind of locked down, and we don't have the same level of interaction. So, just knowing that someone was thinking about them and wanted them to be okay was a big deal for a lot of people. These are just a couple of pictures of our childcare providers, one from Lacey, one from Olympia, picking up their check. And so I just love that photo. So I put it in all my presentations, even if it's not Thurston Strong. I wanted to, I've been thinking a lot about the county's investment and your expectations, and so we've been, I can't tell you the amount of work and the hours that people have put into this to make it work, but I, you know, we talk about numbers a lot, and I just kept thinking, how can we show the county what they did? And so I made this little map, and I want to, if you'll indulge me for a second. By the way, this is more like a 20-minute presentation, not an hour, so we have plenty of Q and A time. Let me find it. Can you see this relief map of Thurston County?
Yeah.
Okay. So, what I've done is collected all the address information for grant and technical assistance recipients. And I wanted to make sure we were being equitable. And so I'm going to, we, you know, we have like 10 different grant and assistance categories. So I'm going to load them, and you can watch layer by layer. I'm going to start by adding Tenino Business Grant. They asked the EDC really to administer their CARES money. And so you can see, there's a number of businesses in Tenino that receive financial assistance. I'm going to scroll back out. And just for context, again, this relief map comes on, buddy, goes from Johnson Point all the way down to Grand Mound, over to Rainier. Okay, so now I'm going to add the Lacey Business Grant. That was something the City of Lacey did on their own at the very beginning, before we formed our regional approach. But you can see they issued quite a few grants out of the gate. The next one we added was the micro-business bridge grant. And yes, that is a bridge icon. You're welcome. It's the best graphic design I've ever done. Okay, so you can see we issued a lot of that. And part of why we wanted to have the bridge grant was to try to get close to, and I think we achieved almost 100% of who asked for funding, got funding. Not always what they need, but something. After that, you'll recall childcare. And the childcare, I'm going to turn off the bridge grant for a second, so you can see, that is a baby. The childcare grant ranged depending on the number of slots that providers were able to provide. We did actually a series of childcare grants. We did an initial one that was probably smaller value, but helped people get through until we could get another round of funding, and we then expanded grants to include not just licensed care providers, but any care provider like the YMCA, who was setting up temporary facilities in schools that were unoccupied at the time. The goal being to make sure that if somebody had a child that needed daycare, we could support it. We also did a minority of women-owned grant, and I'm going to turn these off again real quick. And you can see we issued quite a few of those. We understand this is, even though we're talking about, we can't wait to get to the reset part of this strategy. We started doing the reset as early as possible, having a targeted minority women-owned business grant. Okay. So now I'm going to add in nonprofit grant. We did quite a few of those throughout the county. We did a restaurant retail grant. And then here's your Ag Food System Grant, which really helped get that county-wide coverage that we were looking for. And then we did business training grants, then that's effectively paying the fees for any business that is trying to adapt to COVID life. So, what you can see here is that we literally do have coverage from Rainier to Rochester to Delphi and all the way up to the Oyster Beds in North Thurston County. And you can zoom in, and as you do, you can kind of see the incredible impact that Thurston County created by seeding those grant funds. So, I personally wouldn't mind staring at this for another half hour, but I'm going to take it away unless you want to keep looking at it for a minute. Or if you'd like me to scroll to any particular location.
Don't be, Commissioners, if you have such a request.
I didn't, I didn't hear that.
I was just inviting the Commissioners to just make that request if they wanted to see anything in particular.
No, I'm good.
Yep.
So hence my thank you, again, to all of you. Continuing on. So as I mentioned, we've been meeting every Friday for a long time, looking at data, sharing anecdotal stories about what we're seeing on the ground and kind of planning what comes next so that we can give you recommendations. And so what we have is the recovery and reset plan. As you'll recall, we, some years ago, probably five years ago now, created the Economic Alliance Plan with all the jurisdictions and major community economic development organizations. And that was going great until COVID hit, and we will eventually update that. But what we thought we were going to need is a kind of a nearer-term plan to adjust with COVID realities and impacts. And so, 24-month plan is, what can we do now? How can we take advantage of some of the federal and state resources that will be coming through here? And, you know, what's the right thing to do? And I'm going to share with you some of the ideas, and there are 29 proposed actions. Not every jurisdiction or partner will be involved with every action. It's sort of, we're sticking with our collective impact model. If we're all doing what we need to do, can we make things better as a community? The plan has three focus areas. As I referenced earlier, the inclusive economy. I think everybody's been following the news, and more people have woken up to the fact that there's some systemic inequalities that have to go. And so we need to be more proactive and intentional about how we do that in expediting the transformation. And so we have a number of actions focused on that. And it isn't, it isn't just race and gender, it's geography. You know, as technology takes a larger share of the economic pie, some of the rural areas are falling behind. So what can we do to bring everybody along? Obviously, economic resiliency, we've learned that we could have been better prepared for this. I think Thurston County, well, I don't think, I know Thurston County was a model for a lot, many parts of the state and far beyond. When I look at the visitors to Thurston Strong, there are a lot of people saying, how did they do that? I want to do that. And so, and yet it wasn't as good as it could have been. So we want to work on making sure we're resilient. We've seen data that shows that people who have gone through the business training and scale-up programs at the EDC fared much better than those who didn't have any training going into this pandemic. People who didn't keep books, that didn't fully understand cash flow, that didn't have an online presence, didn't do as well. And so we need to kind of get in front of that before the next thing comes around. And then finally, economic expansion. You know, the data shows that many of the jobs lost were lower wage. And maybe they're not coming back. And so, what new opportunities can we create for people to work in Thurston County? Can they be higher wage? Can we recruit new industries? Can we can we grow the supply chain for industries that already exist here that import goods or services from outside of Thurston County? That's a four-hour conversation. So when you look at the plan, this is just one, I just picked one action to show you how it's laid out. So under inclusive economy focus area, one initiative is to establish, invest in childcare as a critical economic development strategy, et cetera. Then we talk about why it matters, what we expect the outcome to be from our actions, who's leading it and who's supporting it. And again, you know, childcare, you know, it's, I think we've all come to the point of realization that childcare isn't just like a nice thing to have. It's a thing you have to have. If we don't have childcare, fewer people are going to go to work because, or if we don't have affordable childcare, I should say, because it's either not worth it for the jobs that they have, or they can't find it because it doesn't suit their needs. And, you know, who's not going to go back to the workforce is primarily women. And if we're building an inclusive economy, we can't let that happen. So you have a copy of the plan. I'm not going to read these verbatim. But under inclusive economy, we're talking about doing things like standing up a minority business advisory committee. Help us understand what actions can be taken, what conditions can be affected. We're talking about getting serious about pulling more people into successful career pathways. And one way to do that would be looking at census-based strategies. So there are certain pockets of Thurston County that have higher vulnerability thresholds, low income, single-parent households, so forth. And we can, we have the ability now to use data to find out where they are. And maybe we can build programs that work with the neighborhoods, that have, that hold meetings, introduce kids to mentors, whatever it takes to help change the course. Resiliency, one thing and part of what I'm going to talk about at the end here is, we, you know, we're not out of the woods with the current pandemic. So we need to continue to invest and support businesses that are just hanging on, then employ people. A lot of times in Thurston County, we talk about, you know, people think of the economy as multinational corporations trying to get everything they can take. And really, it's, in Thurston County, it's regular people trying to take care of their families. And we're not done helping them make it through this. We have real-time data that we can look at. So the economic landscape has changed. It's going to be a little while before we can figure out exactly how, but there, you know, you've heard talk of the K-shaped recovery. There are certain industries, you know, like travel, that obviously are decimated that we want to try to revive. But there are other industries who've been doing just fine, or who have popped up overnight because of a new opportunity. And so how can we grow those to generate more employment and more revenue generation in Thurston County?
Jason, real quick, on the last two slides, or the last three slides, is there meaning to the ones that are bolded versus not bolded?
The ones in bold were sort of, the task force was universally thinking, let's get going on those today. It's a two-year plan, so what's the one-month starting point? And then, looking to the future, I believe the Commission's going to have a briefing from Michael Cade this afternoon or soon about the formation of an Economic Development District. And the short version of that is, if we join with peer counties in our region and complete what's called a comprehensive economic development strategy that sort of pinpoints our shared economic opportunities, we can enroll in the Federal Economic Development Agency program and get access to more federal dollars. And Michael has a really great presentation to go through all the details on that. But as of today, Thurston County is one of only two counties in Washington that aren't part of those federal economic development districts, and then therefore ineligible to apply for funding that could include things like broadband. So we're trying to position Thurston County to have a chance to do that. We have, this was already starting to happen a little bit, but with COVID, I think it's going to accelerate. And that is displaced workers starting new businesses. And that could be a good thing. That could be a net positive. If people who were working in minimum-wage jobs start new businesses and can grow their wealth, we want to help them, and that's going to take some capital. It's going to take expanded access to capital. And one of the things Michael's already working on is looking to either work with an existing financial institution or recruit one to become a CDFI lender. And those are institutions that traditionally provide capital to minority-owned businesses that have harder time qualifying for traditional loans. And so that's one of many things that we're talking about doing to provide capital in the community.
Jason, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And my question's in regards to the federally recognized Economic Development District. And how does, you know, a county get that, or how do we get to that point?
The simple answer is, we, our particular opportunity would be to, there's an Economic Development District that exists with Pacific, Grace Harbor, Mason County. And it's pretty much defunct at this point. So Thurston County could join that district. And to join that district, Michael's already done the work on the political side to say, would you, would you like a new member friend? And they've said yes. And so what we would have to do next is complete that plan I mentioned. It's called the SEDS. And then once the SEDS is approved by the EDA, we would, you know, apply to become a, you know, a reformed district. And we would have to set up governance structures. It would come with some funding to pay for the administration of the district from the federal government. And then we would, you know, of course, along the way, have to talk to each county council and say, does this feel right to you? And make sure everything works.
And Commissioner Mahia, Michael Cade has a briefing set up with us this afternoon. And so he'll be able to dive into greater detail and walk us through how that would work.
And then in the plan, we, you know, the plan is focused on things that partners within the task force have a role in leading or instigating. But the plan also acknowledges other important things that have to happen that others are taking on, from the Thurston County Department of Health to nonprofits and beyond. And those include things like pulling in resources for homeless response, for mental health opioids, affordable housing, you know, it's just become exacerbated. Identifying shovel-ready projects, even though the federal response to the pandemic isn't the same as it was in the 2008 to '10 Great Recession with, what's your shovel-ready? There's going to be some shovel-ready requests coming down. We need to be prepared. Broadband, you know, if you have high-speed internet at your house and you have an office Broadband, you know, if you have high speed internet at your house and you have an office job, it hasn't been impossible to make it through the pandemic. If you don't, that's a different story. Uh, and so we understand we, we need to expand access. We, we, we're going to have to retrain a, a lot of workers and we're going to have to reach young people sooner in their school um, trajectory to let them know um, that there are, there are pathways for them. Before the pandemic hit, we had just commenced a project called the Education to Financial Stability Task Force that showed, you know, depending on the high school, on average, about half of uh, high school seniors in Thurston County weren't completing their FASA and going on to get any kind of certificate or degree after high school. And you can see uh, who they are and you can see uh, the amount of earnings that they leave on the table by not doing that over a career, uh, which it is close to a million dollars and equals a retirement and safety and security. And so there's a lot of work to be done in that area. And we can continue to grow our agricultural um, hub. And there's work already started on that through the EDC, Pack Mountain. I know the county has an ag plan. Um, we can expedite that. And then uh, next to last slide here, we, the, the task force wants to be accountable. Um, so we want to continue to meet. We're, you know, when we started in March 2020, we thought, well, we need to get through the next couple of months. And here we are. Um, and we realized we need to probably be in place another year to provide a channel um, for supporting businesses and workers. Uh, and so we'll continue to meet and we'll continue to report to you um, what progress we've made. And hopefully at the end of this, um, we can pivot back to uh, with an understanding of what the new economic landscape looks like, how to plan for the future. And then uh, final slide here, this is um, an iterative table. But based on our conversations with uh, Thurston County, Olympia, Tumwater. We have laid out a plan to fund what we can um, from the, the plan I just shared with you. Everything on this initiative list on the left is part of the plan. And Thurston County has indicated support um, at levels you see here in this column. And in particular, minority enterprise investment grants at 3.3 million and agriculture at 2.1 are the anchors. There's an additional 2.2 dedicated to administering and issuing uh, small business grants. Exactly how those programs would work will be um, detailed to you at a later date. We're sorting through all the state and federal resources that are coming through. For example, um, it, there is going to be a separate childcare grant fund um, offered from the federal state government. And that's why you don't see that here. If, if we, if we're not seeing Thurston County providers getting their fair share, then we'll probably take a, a chunk of this business relaunch and dedicate it to childcare. Same thing with nonprofits. There's going to be a separate nonprofit grant, both state and federal. Same thing with um, restaurants. There's a restaurant rescue uh, plan that is going to fund up to $5 million per location for eligible recipients. So we're going to, we're going to track all of that and we're going to uh, tailor our, our local grant programs to the things that are slipping through the crack. So far, um, we've got uh, preliminary okays from Thurston County, Olympia and Tumwater. Lacey is asking to have some additional time to consider how they use their pass through America Rescue Plan dollars. So those, those are a lot of words. I'll pause and um, and take questions and dialogue.
I guess uh, first I would say I really like that map. I uh, I think the visual is amazing. And so if you were going to talk to a group, say if I was going to talk to a group and uh, and you had that as a visual to show how those resources were spread around in so many different areas. And uh, I think people can relate to that almost immediately. So if uh, you want to ship me a map or something, I'll have blown it and put it up on the wall or something here. But uh, I really think it's, it's well thought out. I am really impressed with everything that you guys have done. It's uh, I mean, I'll, I'll take that all the way down to our county manager and uh, uh, working this out with you folks and getting it going. So I do think we've got some things to do yet. We've got uh, affordable housing, which is an issue. And we will never have affordable housing if we don't have adequate housing. And uh, I think we need to address the whole urban flight. And I think uh, once we get that broadband put in place, it's going to alleviate a lot of travel on our roads. It's going to lower our carbon footprint. I think we're going to continue to attract the right kind of business. And I can only say you guys are sure doing a good job. So I'll just uh, leave it at that. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. I will um, I've created a, a PDF version of the, of the map that shows layer by layer and then the full thing that I, I can share with you.
That, that would really be great. I, I just think it, it's such a quick visual to explain uh, what you did and your, even your little uh, engineering mark, your bridge or whatever it was, you know, childcare, the whole thing. I mean, it really kind of brings it all together. I don't have to have smaller, uh, smaller dots though, because there's no room. We swamped the bridge or the, the map. We wouldn't be able to tell what we're talking about there. So anyway, you guys did a good job on that. Thank you.
We smothered Thurston County with love.
There you go.
So you touched on childcare and it's definitely an interest of mine, uh, not only because have a child that's going to daycare and I know how hard it was just to find one during the pandemic. But as we move forward, are more daycares going to start opening or what's, what's that going to look like heading into the future? Do we know?
Yeah, you know, I'm going to ask Michael to talk about that because the EDC is trying to facilitate the creation of, of more daycares. Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, one of the things that we've been focusing on certainly in the last nine months is the notion that childcare uh, needs to operate as an effective business. And one of the things that we do at the EDC very well through their Center for Business Innovation is technical, business technical assistance. So we actually have created several programs and curriculums for specifically targeted toward childcare. So they can increase their profitability. They know how to do it. They can run their cash flow. They can analyze it and just become better, stronger businesses. And then the next thing that we'd like to do is start working with uh, folks that are entrepreneurs um, and use it as a business model. So we've started to push out the notion that if you are an entrepreneur and you have a, a passion and a desire for that, we can certainly work with you to set up your business and set up that operations fairly effectively. We can do the research. We can do the demographics. We can run the analysis of where the market's at. Um, and so many times people kind of forget, well, I'm going to open up a coffee, coffee shop. Uh, well, we can find out how many coffee drinkers there. We're going to have, find out how many families and emerging demographics and the emerging kind of growth of the area. So you can place your childcare facility in the most effective place for you to be successful. And the other thing that we're doing, Commissioner, is working with um, the state uh, level. To make sure that um, the state is paying attention to regulations, rules, requirements um, that, that govern uh, childcare operations and make sure that they're paying attention to that. Uh, we don't regulate, overregulate and have unintended consequences with childcare. We kind of ran into that process uh, 10 years ago, uh, when essentially home, in-home daycare was really tough to find because of all the rules and regulations. So let's address that on the legislative issue. So one, it's technical assistance. One, it's market analysis. And the third is um, the state legislative strategy.
Thank you.
Well, um, there's another that um, Michael kind of covered it with, with the layers issue. We're, we're talking to some of the municipalities informally already about if you want to start a daycare and you're going to put in a building in city X, it can cost between 30 to $50,000 uh, minimum in impact fees to even get started. And so in a business model with very low profit margins, to be that far in debt before you open your doors is uh, an incredible barrier that I think we can, can build policies around to protect from.
Couple random questions. What is, what is Hacky Ag?
Um, Hacky's a nonprofit that's um, right now primarily uh, operating out of uh, Lacey um, and rural Thurston County. And it's introducing um, I think it's mostly black um, farmers to agriculture um, and growing self sustenance um, through uh, ag operations. Um, they're working with um, the Washington State Extension Agency. Um, and they have some ideas for not just kind of growing farming out in rural Thurston County, but um, gardens and so forth in the cities or with inner city kids.
Yeah, good job. Um, that was, that was great. So uh, some of their current projects are Victory Gardens in Lacey, a food sovereignty curriculum with North Thurston Schools, uh, management of school gardens. And some of the potential projects that they're looking into the future on are BIPOC incubator farms and food and medicine forest gardens. Um, and so this is really supporting black and brown farmers, uh, build trust in the black community and provide safe spaces to congregate, uh, providing access to farming education, removing systemic barriers to food sovereignty and so.
Okay. Um, the food hub activities mentioned here, and this is something that I was really interested in last year when it got going. Cause I, I know it's been years and, and effort trying to get it going. And I hadn't, haven't heard anything about it lately. I'm just wondering how that project is going uh, now? If anybody knows.
You want me to jump in there? You want me to jump into that, Jason?
Please.
Uh, well, there's a lot. There's, there really is a lot. Um, I would start with the notion that um, through relationship with Cooperative Extension Office, Wazoo Cooperative Extension Office, Port of Olympia and Pacific Mountain Workforce Development Council, we established a, a kind of a food security hub. Where essentially we're teaching farmers how to package and, and collectivize and put together boxes of food where, whereas before they're just, they're producers and they put it on a truck and out it goes. So now we're working with the farmers and the producers, how to package and appropriately push out their food stuffs. And then we, we did on the backside as we created, so that was with a partnership with the Workforce Development Council. And then with Cooperative Extension Center and our Economic Development Council staff, uh, we created a network where we're actually delivering those food boxes to families in need and organizations of need. So we deliver them to nonprofits, food bank, et cetera, et cetera. And then the last thing I would say, Commissioner, is one of the biggest things is we continue to create the, the Agriculture Food Center uh, in Tonino. And that, that is moving forward. We, we won't get into too much of the details on the, on going vertical on those buildings, but we fully intend to go into vertical on those buildings. But had we, we attached, going back to originally, we attached workforce to the piece, uh, how you distribute. And actually, um, and the other piece I left off was institutional buyers. Um, and so that uh, producers now have a relationship with institutional buyers. We've worked with Providence uh, to actually buy uh, local for their cafeteria, their food, food services. Working with the school districts, uh, Olympia School District and I think Tumwater School District as well, to buy their stuff locally from local producers. So we're increasing the awareness, increasing the capacity and also the availability of local foodstuffs.
That's what I, I'd, I'd heard a bit about that in, you know, connecting up the institutional buyers and I was hoping that that was taking off because that's not really.
Our, um, our Economic Development Council Board meeting, which is next Wednesday, um, Commissioner Edwards, uh, he'll see the agenda. The majority of that hour and a half will be spent on that food systems and the, how we're working to push forward that agenda. So um, he'll get a deep, deep, debrief on that. And we always invite Jenica to attend that meeting as well. And if you'd like to participate or watch, please let me know and we'll send you the link.
We're getting um, the task force will be getting a briefing on the Food Network this Friday. And um, if there are specific resources that might be enlightening, we'll have, make sure Jenica gets them to you.
Uh, I just have one other question that um, the economic expansion initiatives. The last one, which is in bold, be proactive in addressing housing labor challenges. I'm just wondering what, what, what does that mean or what does that look like? Could you say a little more about that?
Yeah. Um, who knows exactly what it's going to look like, but here are some things that we're thinking about. So it's been a while since I briefed the commission on, on the Pack Mountain Regional Industry Cluster Study. But we, we, we do look at the data and we, we think what are the like driving industries in our region? You know, food, IT telecom, et cetera. And I've never um, selected construction before because it's flighty. It's up, it's down, it's up, it's down. So if I'm going to try to direct to someone into a career, that's, that seemed risky. But what we're seeing now for the first time in a long time is all, all of the municipalities have backlogs of construction permits that are bigger than they've ever been in the history of Thurston County. And we're importing like 90% of our construction labor from outside of Thurston County. Our median home price is beyond the capacity of 80% of the people that live here. I just made that number up, but it's, it's ridiculous, as you know. So w- w- what we need to do is build more affordable homes and, and ways to do that are, you know, not just on the policy side and impact fees and so forth, but it's local labor. I mentioned earlier, people that are displaced from their traditional jobs. Through Pack Mountain and the Thurston Chamber, for example, we're going to offer short term certificate training in construction fields so that people can get entry level construction jobs and, if they want to, and work their way up. That pay more than uh, maybe a, a food server job. Over the long term, we, we want to look at um, the whole supply chain in construction, uh, home construction. Do we, um, can we produce some of the materials that are used in home constructions, uh, construction in Thurston County? Can we set up a round table with local developers to ask them, what else do you need to be able to produce affordable homes in Thurston County? Can we do a program that is specifically um, tiny homes or something that helps solve, you know, at least part of the homeless response challenge? So, Michael, I don't know if you want to jump, jump in on that.
No, I think you did a good job. Um, yeah, it really is. I, I guess I look at it a couple of ways, Commissioner. I look at it um, on the supply and demand side. Supply being supplied labor and the demand for that labor. Right now there is a demand for that labor because it's Jason mentioned, mentioned, there's a lot of backlog of projects. The other thing that we can't control, uh, for example, is the cost of uh, materials. I mean, I don't know if you've watched the cost of a sheet of plywood is phenomenal now. Um, you know, trading your gold for plywood, right? So we can't, we can't really address that. And that's a fairly significant so, physical supply chain. But we can address the supply on the labor side to make sure that there, people are looking at the construction trades as a viable opportunity and a viable option. Um, and as a significant piece of their, their future. So that's, Jason did a good job. So.
Is there like, so in terms of like, these programs versus what maybe trade unions are doing? You're, you're feeling that there's a gap that could be filled. Like you talked about short term certification training, I think Jason mentioned. Like you talked about short-term certification training, I think Jason mentioned. That's a gap that's not being connected by some of our labor unions.
Yeah, that, yeah, I guess back to Michael's phrase, there's not enough supply for those training programs. And in fact, we're talking about, you know, that you can use the workforce system to offer some of this short-term training, but there's other, like when you get into skilled carpentry, we're going to need SPS or somebody like that to step up and offer those kinds of programs. And so we've actually had conversations, I've shared the data with the community college on what specific occupations are in demand, the wage levels, the career pathways. And they're evaluating what kinds of training they could offer as well. So I'm envisioning a continuum of training opportunities depending on where people want to go in the construction industry.
Ramiro, turn to you if you've got anything.
I really appreciate this briefing. I think it really consolidates the, all the great work the Thurston Strong have done over the last year or so. It also consolidates how we're going to bridge over into the next few months. In terms of the next steps, the American Rescue Plan funds will be coming to the county hopefully by mid-May. We're hoping that at that point, we'll have a clear guidance from the federal, from this state treasury, I mean, the state treasury, the federal Treasury Department as to see how we can consolidate the proposal that I introduced to the board a few weeks ago. It may include a couple of revisions just to make sure that we are aligned with the new guidance. But I really appreciate you giving us a perspective that at least we'll have a commitment. Or you have a tentative commitment from Olympia and Tom Water. And I know that Lacey is, I think, is planning to have a planning session as to how their American Rescue Plan should be involved. So I really appreciate this. Please stay tuned when I introduce this proposal again to the board. And at that point, I will ask the board to give us a clear direction as to how we can start spending the money. Because I do believe there is still a need out in our community to continue to support their businesses impacted by COVID-19 and the emergency. And I cannot express enough my gratitude to both of you, Michael and Jason, as the leaders of Thurston Strong, because you have been the instrument as to how the county has been able to help our community.
Thank you, Ramiro. It's been a pleasure to, to be part of the solution. And I, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that, I don't know who thought of it, but pulling Jenica into Thurston County was genius. So congratulations on that asset. She's amazing.
We agree on that one.
Rob and Jenica, any last comments, questions before we wrap up?
No, just reiterating my thank you to Michael and Jason. It's been a pleasure working with you and your guidance and leadership has just been amazing. So thank you.
Yeah, just to say ditto, our, our community is surviving this in large part through your help. So thank you for everything you're doing. Great partners.
Great. We'll see Michael a little later today. Double dose. So that's, we'll look forward to that. Thank you, Jason. And with that, we're done.
Thank you.